All right, there we go. We are recording. Good day, everybody. Welcome to the cut. I am Anthony Oquendo and on behalf of myself and Tom Ratu is actually absent today. Again, we welcome you. We are still on our search for our Ashbyla area city schools board of education. And we are still interviewing candidates and today we have a candidate who's he's made a made a name for himself on the board. He's but yeah, I mean, he's definitely stirred up some controversy, brought up some conversation, a lot of conversation. I present to you Mr. Tim Fleming.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate it. I appreciate that intro. I would have to say kind of accurate a little bit.
A little bit. I made some headlines. So Tim, welcome. Thank you for joining us. So tell us, you know, a little bit, first of all, how long have you been? I guess an advocate for students or just kind of involved in the community like this in this aspect and what brought you, what got you into the into helping kids out and helping out the community? And what drives you to run for the board?
I appreciate the question. Initially, two thousand and two, I became a substitute teacher at Ashbyla area city schools. And it opened up my passion. And you know, I just never looked back. You know, I began to see some of the things that that were important to me. I saw some changes that needed to be made in the district. And and I just set my mind to it that I was going to be an advocate to make sure that not only these students, you know, my community that we had a you know, we had a school system which I believe is the heartbeat of the community. So I wanted to make sure that we were, we weren't going to be in a situation where we'd be flatlined. You know, so I really wanted to interject my, my passion, my understanding, my care for the community. And and I just, I've been doing it a long time and I just, opportunity came to run for school board. And I think my body of work kind of spoke for itself. The community rallied behind me. I would say one thousand and nineteen people said, you know, we want you to be the voice of the people. And 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 I stand by that, my commitment to the voters, to the community and the commitment I have to these kids. So it's been a long journey. Like I said, I was, I was thirty-two when I started this. I'm fifty-five. And I wish I could switch those numbers around and change them, but I can't because they match. So yeah, so I'm still in it. And so with that being said, you know, that's why I'm running for reelection.
Awesome. So you've been on the board for how long?
So I'm in my last term of a four-year commitment, which ends December thirty-first of this year. So you know, that's why we're having an election now. So yes, I would say three years, eleven months.
So yeah, right, we're right around the corner from the elections. Make sure you get out there and vote.
Absolutely.
So what are some of, what are some of the challenges the school district faces? Obviously, you know, the, the report cards haven't been great for the school. Why, why do you think that is?
Well, I think it's a combination of things, right? So we can pick and choose, but I think collectively we need to communicate those concerns. So I think it's just societal forces, right? You have families that are dealing with, you know, addiction, single parents, you know, a lack of resources, not communicating maybe with the, with the teachers or or getting the tools that they need or classified certified. So I just think really until we meet to talk about what, 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 even if we know the problem, what are the solutions that need to be in place? You know, we have twenty-two failing report cards out of twenty-three, right? Maybe twenty-one out of twenty-two, we have one D, right? So consecutively for that to continue, you know, that has to be addressed. So I think when you address those problems, when you know actually what they are, and then when you have a problem, you have to understand, you have to understand the problem and then how do you resolve it? So I think that's, that's, that's something I want to be more informed about.
Understandable. Do, do parents reach out to you or? Yeah, I guess do parents reach out to you and express their concerns as far as what they see is an issue in the district?
Yeah, like you know, because we lack the communication and involvement of the community, so that's not far and in between that happens. But there's times I'll get a comment. A parent may see me at a grocery store or at a function and say, hey, you know, my, my son is in eighth grade and they continue to promote him and he's received straight apps for the last three years, right? So those are disheartening things. So I think when parents get frustrated, they don't know the answer either because they entrust the school system to, to resolve those issues, right? So they can handle the societal forces that attack the family, you know, outside of the school, right? So we got eight hours with them and what about the other sixteen, right?
Right.
So yeah, so I hear concerns like that. There's some parents, you know, um, you know, so we don't get a lot of expression that way. Uh, we just, you know, we just see the situation that we're in and hopefully with this new possibility to have a new board, a different perspective, we can get that involvement and start to listen to what their concerns are.
And what are some of the concerns that you've, uh, parents have expressed to you?
The lack of transparency. They feel that they're not being heard. And then when you see some of the actions being taken by the current, the current board, when people want to speak out, how they're limited in their expression, maybe not really understanding who to reach out to, how to even start those lines of communication. So I think those are concerns as well. Like I said, they're far and in between. This is just, people are quiet about it, right? You get in a situation where you've been failing for so long, sometimes you just get desensitized. And I think that we don't want that to continue.
So I've asked other candidates and they've mentioned this, which I thought was a good point. There's a chain of command as far as, you know, if parents have issues, obviously teacher, principal, superintendent, then if stuff's still going nowhere, then obviously you're going to go to the board. So maybe would you say it's a good thing that it's few and far between?
Well, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's good to be, you know, when you talk about the concerns of the people, right? That means they're not, if they're not talking about it often, that means they feel that they can't. Right? So even in that chain of command, somewhere we have a cutoff, right? So if they're going to, and even if they fall all the way up to the board, right? And then we don't address those concerns, then what good is it, right? So when you feel you're not heard, you stop talking, right? So that's why we don't have the involvement that we need. Because if you don't feel like people care about what you're saying, then why say anything at all? So that's where we want to, that's our flat line, right? One of our components of, of the issues that we're having. I want people to continue to talk, right? So I don't know how the other board members are involved in the community, but I can tell you since I've been on the board, I feel that maybe I'm a, I'm, I'm, I present myself in a way where the community feel they can't talk to me. So I do get more calls now, you know, being a board member. I do hear a little bit more. I get letters and people kind of express how they feel. And I think that I'm able to build a rapport. Cause they feel like if I speak to Mr. Fleming, then he may, he'll hear, he'll listen and he will take action on my concerns if all possible.
Very fair. Yeah. So so you said you feel like it almost sounds like the community is giving up hope. How do we, how do we provide that buy-in back from the, from the parents? And the students, because I mean, ultimately it's up to the students to get the good grades. I mean, obviously there's got to be some parent involvement, but the students have to want to be able to do this as well. How do we do that?
I think the buy-in, you know, is really, um, being frank, gotta change, gotta change the leadership at the top. Right? Because, um, you know, we, we have challenges up at the top, nepotism. Um, making sure that family and friends get the funding or the raises that they need. It's more of like a family-owned business in the district, you know, we have to really change that up. And that, and that's where, that affects our community. From the board to the superintendent and that, that will stymie or prevent the opportunity to have a buy-in. So to kind of further along with that question, the buy-in is just really communicating more, letting them know, getting other, come and see us. So, so one of the things of being a board member, uh, you know, you know, I'm endorsing two other board members, Sammy Torres and Darius Williams. Mr. Torres is thirty-seven, Mr. Williams is thirty, and they have a perspective, right? They have a buy-in maybe I don't know about, right? And so that's why I want that perspective. Because I made, my buy-in may not be effective as theirs, right? Cause this is their time, right? This is their moment, their era, their understanding, technology, those kinds of things. So I'm hoping that's the estimate that we need, right? So they can tell me and the other board members, what, what is the buy-in? Let's get out there and find out what it is. And then once we know what the buy-in, what they're, what they're asking for, then let's, let's get them to welcome and come into the district. Let's make it like a big, uh, like a family center, right? It is a community, right? The community sits in those seats in the district. So I think the buying is just really find out what, what is it that we need to buy, right? What is it that the people need? And we, we don't know that yet, right? To really answer, okay, what is the buy-in, right? How do we buy it? We don't know the needs yet. So once we know the needs, then we can meet those needs and then create a buy-in. Does that make sense?
It does. So let me ask you. So for teachers to be able to do their job proficiently, uh, they need the right tools and they look to their principals and superintendents for the correct tools. I mean, how, how does that, how, how receptive are the principals and teachers to providing these tools? Because I know a lot of teachers actually come out of pocket for a lot of things, like I had a, another interview last night that, that'll be up later. But with Mr. Rapuse, and he talked about teachers, you know, basically going out and providing for these kids with their own money. Like how do, how do we get the teachers these tools to, to help these students?
Yeah. So I'm glad that you shared that. And that is one of the challenges of our teachers. I think the tool is, is to ask them really, right? So is that, um, some some counseling for them, some mental health, they, you know, kind of be able to rejuvenate themselves so they don't face the burnout of being in the classrooms. And you know, just really kind of talking to them, right? I can give me the answer I want, right? And so I talk to them. They have to tell me, hey, Tim, maybe I need more training in handling at-risk behaviors, right? And then I think the teachers have to identify what are their weaknesses. You know, I feel strong in this way, but I don't seem to be as effective in this way. So once they tell me, then we can say, well, what would work for you? So I think that the tool is really, I should ask them first, right? And what good is a, what good is a wrench if someone doesn't know how to use it, right? So I can't provide the tools until they tell me what they need and then we can find out what those tools should be.
Gotcha. So you said as you brought up the word nepotism, which I've, this is not the first time I've heard it on this, uh, on this journey of mine here with finding the, the perfect school board candidate. So tell us about that because that's been making its rounds.
Yeah. So currently, you know, we have, we have board members that have families that work in the district, right? For example, Mr. Rapuse's wife, she is the head of food services. We have Lisa Newsome. Who is, uh, whose husband is the first cousin to Laura Jones, board member. And we also have Mr. Neme. I, I can't recall the exact relationship it is. If I would take a guess, maybe a son-in-law, something along those lines where he's a substitute in the district.
He's a substitute within the district?
Yes. And Mr. Neme consistently abstains from that every year for his employment. So I see some of the benefits of board members, you know, able to, it seems like they could get the leg up on some positions in the district. So the nepotism, it's, it's troubling, right? Um, you know, when I say that, for example, Laura Jones, like I said, her, her first cousin is Matt Newsom, who is married to our superintendent and her aunt is the head of HR. And even when we're having ref, right? We had to terminate some position. She was able, she was able to still receive over a $4,000 raise on her salary.
Who's that?
Susan Hay, who is the
The, the aunt?
The aunt to Laura Jones. So it's, it's, those things are concerning to me. And so I think that's, that's the the questionable thing that I have about board, board behavior in those manners, you know, being able to take care of their own, right?
So Ashbyla is a small community, um, small city compared to other cities. I mean, you're bound to have, you know, relationships, personal relationships within an employment setting. I mean, so how is that necessarily a bad thing?
Well, I would just say this, I don't have a problem with like some of the balance of nepotism, like you said, to your point that that can happen if someone's qualified, I get it. But to terminate positions, to put families out there without a job, and then you turn around and make sure your relative gets a raise after you do that, that concerns me, right? We, we all have to be in. You can't eliminate positions and turn around and make sure after we do that and then you're, it's cause we have no money, we say, right? We have to reduce, you know, we have, we have riff, you know, reduction in force. And so these positions have to be abolished. But then you turn around after you do that, then here's $4,000 extra to a family member. That's the concern I have with it. That's the drawback I have with nepotism.
Was that like a, a department raise or was that a personal raise for that person's salary?
Well, it, it, it possibly, but here's the thing, when, here's what I think the general community would understand. When you cut jobs, I don't think people expect other people in the district to get raises, right? Cause that's saying, hey, we can't afford it.
But you know, all right, so to push back on that. So yeah, you, when you cut, when you cut a job, you're cutting tens of thousands of dollars to provide a $4,000 raise to, to an employee is not as significant, you know, it's, it's, it's it's a fraction of what you've saved by cutting a position. But also whenever you cut positions, the, the workload has to be increased for the person underneath them or somebody else than that. So, so I think it would be fair to provide raises to other people within a certain area, you know, if you're pulling a member or pulling an employee and abolishing their position, somebody else has to take on that workload, somebody else should get paid more.
Well, yeah. So, and I understand that too, too. And also you want to maintain the talent that you have, right? You, you're fighting the market in that position. And I just think like, and just perspective, right? But if it's a board member's auntie, you understand, it, it just makes it, it sounds sour to some people, right? Now, it doesn't mean it's, it's gospel, right? If I'm on the outside looking in, hey, I just lost my job, say for example, as a paraplegic, right? And maybe that was say it's $20,000 a year, well, I'll just say that for the, for the conversation. Then you see, well, this person got an extra $4,000 raise. Well, it can hurt morale too, right? And then how do you, how do you, how do you explain that, right? So those are just the questions that I have, right? It's not really a necessary, right or wrong, but it's just perspective, right? What, what, how, how does it look? And when we have a district that's doing that and then we're not being, uh, we're not performing right? So what are we paying for? It looks like we, we pay well, but we're not, we're not succeeding, right? So I just think those are just some of the questions or concerns that come my way. And it just, uh, like you said, just having a discussion about it, right? Just like we're doing now. That's what the community wants to be able to do. Just to ask that and then to have your feedback, right? I don't know to be right or wrong. I have to understand, right? So that's my position on that.
Okay. So you, this has been brought up before the, with Lisa Newsome and Laura Jones. I know you've brought up at, at some of the board meetings, their relationship and you've, uh, you know, made a motion to, to terminate Lisa Newsome. Can you, can you explain that? Like what's the reason you would like, or what's the reason you would at least like to have the discussion about, uh, the termination of Lisa Jones? Because, because you, or I'm sorry, Lisa Newsome, because prior to her being appointed superintendent, you made a motion for her to be interim superintendent. You didn't, you didn't get a second at that time, but eventually she did get appointed and now you're basically calling for a resignation.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking that question. So the history behind that is previously when Lisa first got into central office, I'm gonna say maybe in twenty-two, maybe the first ten months or so, she was in, in central office. Uh, in accountability, I think she was doing in, in data collection or doing state funding and programming. She was taking the position of Dr. Washington, who was, who was the assistant superintendent at the time, so she went into Dr. Washington's position. So throughout that process, Mrs. Newsome was applying to be the interim or superintendent. And she was not afford that opportunity. So I'll say maybe two to three times it was declined. She didn't, uh, she wasn't chosen.
Was there a, so was there a superintendent at this time already?
Yeah, we had an assistant, Dr. Washington.
Right.
And so, uh, and you know, Dr. Potts was leaving. So Lisa would continue to try to get, get this position, whatever they were, anything to do with a superintendent, whether it's interim, assistant or super, she would apply. And she was told multiple times, uh, it wasn't a fit for the district. So, um,
Was that a decision made by the board at that time or was that?
By the board. And, uh, and this is before Laura Jones got on the board until the, until I made that motion to, to have her be the interim. So what's going on at that time, we're looking for an interim. And I think I might have given the information, uh, Mr. Neme had reached out to a gentleman named John Rubasic. And he was kind of saying, and I don't know if I sent the email to you, it's probably in there.
What's it about?
Look for interim.
Is this on an email?
Yes, on the email. I think I sent it to you. You'll see interim superintendent possibly for the label.
Let's see. I thought I saw one come over with that name. Let me see.
Try that interim. Let's see what, see what that looks like. Can you scroll down? Keep going, please. Okay, right here. In this email, this is Mr. Neme. Can you show me the date of that, please?
The date is
So even though that smart competition doesn't make it, doesn't make it gospel, what, what is that?
Uh, September sixteenth.
The sixteenth. So Dr. Potts, his letter is not to the twentieth. So here we're in the process of kind of looking ahead. So he's kind of telling us about this guy right here. So I see this email. I didn't interview him or anything. I never met this guy, right? So when I get to the board meeting, I believe it was September twenty-first, uh, twenty-two, he, he shows up. So the board is, has this guy for hire that I didn't even interview. I, I never met him. So I knew Lisa was expressing interest on September fifth, she expressed interest. Um, she expressed interest September fifth. So I thought, well, even though Lisa's been turned down multiple times, I was told the interim was only going to be, um, you know, I was told this, uh, only for a couple of months. And I said, well, you know, Lisa's trying and, uh, what's two, three months? Let's see what she's made out of, right? She feels determined. She wants to do it. I didn't know this guy at all. He's at the board meeting. I don't interview him and they agreed to hire a guy I never met. And that's not even hiring procedures, right? Especially when the, the, the board is responsible for hiring the superintendent. So here's a higher, this is, this is a practice, right? Not a policy here, right? This is what the board.
So can you explain what we're looking at here?
So here, this is Mr. Neme. He meets with this gentleman Rubasic and he's saying with this, what he would want. $500 a day, pickup on a pickup, two weeks vacation, two personal days. So he's saying all these things, but he says that, um, he asked if Mr. Potts should remain on the board. I think also as you look down, he might say, uh, I would like to stress, no offer was made, right? So I'm not
Oh, this is part of another, okay.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is all the same, right? So he tells me there's no offer made. You can see that, right? He said, I would like to stress, then offer was made to John. So I'm thinking I'm at least interview the guy, right?
Right?
But that doesn't happen. This guy shows up. The only person I know that expressed interest to be in the interim at that time was was Lisa Newsome.
So Mr. Neme is already basically endorsing him?
So we're endorsing him.
Okay.
And it's their minds made up at the board meeting, right? That they're going to do this. And I was like, well, no opportunity to meet them. You know, and then this is what they do. So I say, well, Lisa has been turned down multiple times, but if it's only for a couple of months, that's initially what I was told, then we'll let her give, give her a shot. So that's the name I knew. So when I did that, uh, I, I got a failed motion, as she said previously.
Right. So, uh, so my question is, um, did you, did you, uh, motion for John as well?
Yeah. So, yeah. So here's what happens when the information, so they'll, they'll tell you, we have, uh, it's, you know, it's unlawful not to have a superintendent of a school. It's a, it's a, you know, I don't know that if it's right away. It's so it's just a sense of urgency, right? So what choice did I really have? I could, I could have said no, but I wasn't going to change the outcome, right? So lawfully, we need to have a superintendent in place to make our school function. I felt a sense of urgency, right? Well, they're saying, no, Lisa, what choice do I have? It's funny, there's a timeline that they have to do this. So that's the way it was explained to me. But I still felt like you said this is September sixteenth.
Yes.
Right? So we had to twenty-first, why didn't we set up an interview, right? Give me a chance to
So there was no interview done for Mr. Rubasic?
Not at all.
Was there done one, was there one done prior to this, uh, for Lisa Newsome?
Uh, the interview, oh, no, not at all either. But she had previously interviewed. You don't want to mean, even though she was denied those things. So I at least had, I knew who she was. I knew some of the things that she would, uh, wanted to, to, um, some of the plans, strategic plans she had in place. So I was more familiar with, with Lisa Newsome than John Rubasic. So it was only fitting for me, you know, I'm gonna go with, if we need an interim for a couple of months, I'll go with Lisa until we find a superintendent, even though we had an assistant in place. I was told that she wasn't, uh, interested. And I found out later that wasn't the case either, right? With Dr. Washington. And so that's why it was very confusing to me. I didn't understand why Dr. Washington just didn't, you know, step in to be the assistant until we found, uh, a superintendent. So based on the information I had at the time, right? I, uh, I made that decision to go with Lisa. Why, why would I choose someone?
Is there a reason that, uh, Dr. Washington wasn't basically promoted to interim immediately?
Yeah. So it's a little tricky, you know, it might be a little, little, uh, dirt road to that, kind of whiny to it, but here, here's the thing. Dr. Washington, she believes in following the chain of command, right? So what she did, she was very respectful and she would, um, report or converse with the president only, right? Showing that respect to the presidency of the board with the hopes that he would convey her, her wishes. Well, Mr. Neme, uh, he didn't do that.
How so?
Well, I'd be, so initially, this might've been in April.
April of twenty-two?
Yeah, April of twenty-two, a mayor. So, so I, I was hearing, like, see, small town, right? School district. I was hearing that Dr. Washington was interested in being the interim. But I had no proof, right? So I say, well, I heard it for a couple of weeks. So then I made a public request on Mr. Neme's email. And when I did that, he knew that I was doing that. He coughs up an email. And I asked him, I said, did you receive an email from Dr. Washington in interest of the interim position? No, I did not. Not trusting, I want to trust and verify. When I started to do the public, he coughs it up and says, oh, I'm, yeah, I looked at, yeah, I actually do have an email expressing, well, it's three weeks later, right? That he does that. Then I call emergency meeting. Cause I'm trying to give, uh, Dr. Washington an opportunity to be the interim, but it's too late at that point. He withheld that information from me and I didn't like that. He did that. And then I responded back to him in email, now you're only sorry because you got caught. He knew I was coming to find out that he was withholding an email from me. Now, did you, I don't know if it was just me, but that's the trust that she put into the board president. When she expressed that, that, that interest to be interim, she's assuming that I know. She's assuming that the other board members know, and that wasn't the case at all. Mr. Neme withheld that information. And I was not pleased with that at all.
Uh, did anybody? I mean, I don't know. I just, I find it weird that there's even, not even a procedure in place where if, you know, if we lose a superintendent, someone, the, the assistant steps up. I mean, was it not in the plans to reach out as a board and say, hey, you know, we got this situation, you're next in line, essentially? Would you be interested?
Yeah. So here's the thing, when you have a board president, a VP and that majority of the board, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that I would love to be privy to. But when you have, you don't have a, say you're a four-on or you're isolated, uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, you can cut deals, if I can use that word. You can do a lot of things, you know, and, uh, and you find out the last minute. There has been only a few times I've shown up at a board meeting and I'm finding out something new for the first time, just like the people in the audience. And I know then they, they've done something without, without involving me. And, and those are some of the, the concerns you hear me trying to express at board meetings. Cause there's a time that, uh, you know, most of my, uh, school board packets, they come in the mail. So I like to scribble up a little bit. And then, uh, and, and some of that, you know, it's a draft, right? And then there's board, board docs, which I don't use as often as I should, but I, but I have. And sometimes when I get to the board, there's a change made and that, that's the thing about this board that I'm on. There's times I sat down and I'll be reading, I'll say, when did this happen? But by then I know the board's going through. And then you see, I'll try to express that, but And then you see, I'll try to express that, but once their minds made up, that's, I'm finding that challenge often, inconsistently.
So you're, so there, how does, how does everybody get on the same page? Are they holding, like, are they holding meetings without you, or?
I believe so, I mean, they can have conversations, so, uh, two board members can talk to any administrator or staff. No more than, you know, when, when there's three of us, it's considered a board meeting, so if Mr. Nimi wants to go, Dr. Barrettman, or Laura Jones, they wanna go and meet with people and work things out, what am I gonna do? So Dr. Washington, to the point you made, it, it only made sense, leaving with Dr. Potts, when he was going to, uh, resign, he said that he wanted to see, previously, we had Mario, Mario Salii as the assistant superintendent, at that time, it was called school, school improvement, right? But the roles are similar, we just didn't call it assistant superintendent, right? Then officially, two years ago, we changed it to sound that way. So that role was very similar, so Dr. Potts says, hey, I'm, I'm on a five-year deal. Um, then the first year, he's ready to go, so multiple times he wanted to resign, he says, I would like to see Mario Salii continue on with Dr. Washington being the assistant. Well, Dr. Potts wasn't able to push that agenda, the board was not in favor. Um, not speaking on behalf of Mario Salii, but he, he left the district, uh, impeccable talent. So then Dr. Washington is there, right? If I, off the top of my head, I'll say, Dr. Washington has twenty nine years of experience, she had experience down with the Ohio Department of Education. Um, anytime that she had an evaluation or did anything that we needed her to do, uh, she would get twenty-three out of twenty-three, her work was impeccable, um, bar none, right? So for the board to not present her up, I mean, I could take a guess. But, um, it was unfortunate, the way that she was treated in the district, it was shameful.
So how do we get to where we're at now? So, um, this is, we're talking, we're still in April of twenty-two, correct? And then there was a vacant seat on the board, which, uh, was filled by Laura Jones.
Correct.
Um, now initially, Laura Jones submitted a, a reference letter for Lisa Newsom. And then shortly after, she expected, expressed interest in the, the board seat.
Right, for appointment.
Right, uh, now, once Laura's appointed.
Correct.
Lisa Newsom ends up on the board, or ends up as superintendent.
Right.
Okay, um, because I know there was a lot of, like, we, I had a conversation with Laura Jones, and there was a lot of, uh, cause for concern, especially on, from your end, that you've brought up at, at meetings, um, about the relationship between the two, and some of the things that may have gone on, gone on behind the scenes. I mean, break that down, I, I talked to Laura, Laura Jones about it, about the, uh, the reference list, about, um, the ref, the, I'm sorry, yeah, the reference list for the candidates, the reference letter from herself in, endorsing Lisa Newsom. Um, I mean, what do you, what do you see going on? You're, you make these, you know, these, uh, motions at, at the board meetings, what's going on there?
Yeah, so, there's a lot to unpack there, right? So let me see if I can lock it down. So I think it was like April eleventh or so, like you said, she made a letter recommendation for Lisa, right? To be, uh, maybe the superintendent, and then shortly after she's appointed. Well, the chaos really came after the appointment. The next day, see, I didn't know Laura Jones, right? So I know that, uh, during that appointment, Sammy Torres, uh, went for the appointment, and it was, uh, and it was a two-two. Uh, Repusa myself for Sammy Torres, Barryman and Nimi, no. Nimi expressed that the reason why Sammy Torres was not fit to be on this board because of his opposition against Christine Seaford. And I expressed to him that that's no reason to hold that against Mr. Torres. And I knew then that retard, the retaliatorial, retaliatory actions of the board, it was a real thing. Right? This Miss Seaford thing is a real thing in the district currently, too, it's a real thing. So, um, and that, that permitted, that, that, that didn't permit him to be on, on, on the seat. And then, uh, Mrs. Chapman, forty years of community service, she's on our wall of fame at the high school, right? For her contribution to our community, she can't even get a second. So then Laura Jones, who I, I didn't know anything about, I voted no to her, cause I wasn't familiar with her. Shortly after, next day, actually, I began to hear swirls of rumors, that I deemed rumors at the time, that Laura Jones had sued the district. Dr. Bearman's on the board at the time, and I just really couldn't grasp that, yeah, I said, nah, uh, I don't think a board would appoint someone that sued us, and it wasn't adding up.
Let me ask you a question, was there an interview process for that?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, you came in and there were six questions, right? We asked some softball questions, right? And then I was in, maybe they lasted maybe eight to ten minutes, they're very short. And, uh, I actually interviewed Laura Jones myself, so I interviewed maybe, maybe there was nine or ten, I did maybe five, six candidates. So I think initially, the first day, it was a two-day process, Dr. Barrettman did, did a portion, I believe, and then the next day I did the other part of it, right? So to continue on what I was saying, um, after the appointment of Laura Jones, I found out there was more behind that. I found out that she had a relationship with, with Miss Seaford. I find out that, um, she, she had litigation against the district. And so I, I actually called the school attorney that Saturday, and I asked, can this be true? He says that, uh, he didn't represent that case, but there was some litigation, and I was just like, why would we? And so I believe that plays a part, and, and I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand that decision by the board to do that.
Uh, well, the, the board, I mean, the board would have had to been aware, because you, as you said, uh, Ms. Barrettman was on, on this, the lawsuit.
Yeah, she was listed as a defendant two thousand seventeen. Cause I also said to the attorney, well, she, she had abstained. But see, I didn't know enough at the time, so really, if I could say it this way, being on the board is like an episode of Scooby Doo. Right? You go into a town, and there's a mystery, and then you gotta figure all this out, and every time you pull off the mask, it's a school board member, right? That's what it feels like. And that's, it seemed like that's been my role for the last year and a half or so. I have to track down all this information, all the misinformation, all the conniving, the untruths, the lies. And then when I, when I finally get to the, solving the mystery, and I pull the mask, then it's a problem. So I, I would, I would equate it to being on Scooby Doo. And when I, when I, and when I ask them questions, they sound like Scooby Doo.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would, that, that first question you asked, you know, should she abstain, abstain, should have abstained? Uh, I think that's a fair question. Yeah, it's hard being in a small city like this, because everybody knows everybody, which I find could be a problem. Um, or a good thing, just depends on your situation, I guess. But, uh, all right, so Laura Jones, she's on the board, you're hearing these things. Uh, you, you, you talked to, to counsel about the, the lawsuit, um, they confirm it. Then what?
And well, so now I would just say, so as that, as that starts to, uh, um, like it'll come out, right, expressed, um, I realized that Lisa Newsom, um, tells me that she, she's talking about, uh, a lawsuit, right? But I don't know what Laura Jones at the time, but Lisa is sharing that she testified against, uh, Dr. Watson, so it was Laura Jones versus Dr. Watson, who was our current superintendent. Lisa was employee of the district at the time, so Lisa Newsom shares that she testified on the behalf of Laura Jones in two thousand seventeen. So the concern I, I had is that, oh, is this a, oh, now I'mma do you a favor? You, you testified on my behalf in litigation, now here's an opportunity for you to be, uh, so I'm, I'mma do you a solid, so that's where I had unease, I'm uneasy about that.
Other than the possible conflict of interest between the two of them, um, how would you, like, are you? Are you comfortable with Lisa Newsom as a superintendent, and her capabilities?
Well, um, what I, what I experienced with her currently, no. Now, I've been, I've been, uh, in a position, I've had three superintendents, right, I have Dr. Potts, I've had Rubicich, and now I have Lisa, so I've kinda seen some things, right? So I would say, for example, probably, hmm, maybe, maybe two weeks prior to her uh, being, um, hired as superintendent. And let me touch on this part right here, now that it comes to mind, um, Lisa Newsom, um, when Laura Jones mentions that she abstained from hiring of Lisa Newsom, she abstained from, when, when, when the board meeting seemed to hire her, she abstained from that, so it went, Nimi said yes, Barryman said yes, Repu said yes, then she abstained, then I said no, and I say to her, yeah, it's only fitting that you would. But when it came to the school board meeting, the regular school board meeting, she approved her hire. So I wanna be clear on that, that's why you hear me say, what is it, Jones? You abstaining or you approving? Cause now she switches her position. Okay, now, back to, um, two weeks prior to that, there was an incident in the, um, that I became aware of, her husband Matt Newsom got ejected from a basketball game at, uh, NDCL, Notre Dame Cathedral, uh, Latin. There was, um, I think it was a Friday game, a Saturday game, he, he got ejected, and I hear that it had to do something with, with, um, racial slurs, so this is, this is about Lisa's, um, um, what I've seen, you know, should she lead the district, right? The things I've been seeing in her abilities, right? So this is gonna line up with that, that question. So I, um, initially wanted to defend Matt Newsom. Nah, you know, if he's gonna get ejected for racial slurs, I'm behind that, but when I go to.
As far as, uh, so, so break that down.
Okay, so initially, it came to me that Matt Newsom got, uh, ejected from a game, uh, say, February fourth or whatever, and I'll say, what happened? You know, I got a couple calls. Um, they were calling, um, the black kids on the Lakeside basketball team, maybe Aunt Jemima, Monkeys. And I was like, well, he should, he should get ejected, he should be upset about that. So, um, maybe he serves a consequence, two-day, uh, two-game suspension, maybe has to take a class. So I'm trying to, in my mind, I'm thinking, how can I, um, appeal this? How can I help Matt? Cause I, I, I support that. However, when I delved into the Usher report, right, by the referee, there's no mention, Matt Newsom was just, uh, ejected for his conduct. So the narrative changed. I said, well, what's going on with these racial slurs? So then I asked, well, who's the administrator that was at the game? They said Lisa Newsom. So I said, well, why didn't she report it? Well, they tell me that she spoke to the, uh, athletic director of NDCL, Jason Baxter, who is a former AD of Lakeside. He told her, don't worry about it. I said, nah, 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 we're gonna worry about it. So when Lisa didn't report it, her husband didn't report it, I took issue with that. So you're gonna see.
So what did he get, what did he get?
Also, like, you know, um, it sound like, you know, um, you know, maybe saying, you're the worst ref, you know, whatever statement he made, I wasn't there. But it's, you know, like, a, how a coach, I guess, would talk to a referee, right? But it was, had nothing to do with racial, right? So I was misinformed, cause that's what made me come forward. Hey, I'm gonna, but that wasn't the case, it was just a coach getting ejected, like maybe most coaches do during the year, right? So when that wasn't reported, I, um, spoke with Rubicich. Hey, um, you know, I'm talking to Mr. Rubicich, I said, hey, you know, I'm here, there's racial slurs.
So this is, you said this is about ten days before her hire?
Yeah, around there, right, so I don't, I don't like the handling of these racial slurs, right? And then, um, I, I talked to Rubicich, and I said, hey, you know, um, you know, we, we, we can't just, uh, brush it under the rug, these kids, you know, making monkey noises, I'm here, there. You know, the people, uh, you know, alleged that, excuse me, some of, some of the, um, student bodies were making monkey noises, it's kinda upset some of the kids, I said, no, we need to look into this. And let's see if these kids need some help, can't just leave them hanging, right? This, and they experienced something. While I'm talking to Rubicich, he hangs up on me when I'm talking about it. And then that, you know, I realized then that, you know what, I'mma continue to push it. And when I continue to push it, that's why you have the letter dated for February fifteenth or twenty-two, the letter that I issued. The letter that states that, um, that we won't be playing NDCL this basketball season for the twenty-three, twenty-four school, uh, for the basketball season. So the letter that I gave you, you know, I kinda brought it to you.
There's a letter in here.
Yeah, so that letter is from Dr. Perkins and John Rubicich, indicating to NDCL, we will not be playing that basketball team. Right here, there it is, there's your letter, and it's dated for, what's the date on that?
Uh, February fifteenth.
Right, so shortly after, even though Rubicich doesn't, um, feel compelled initially to investigate, I don't, I don't, uh, relinquish my, 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 um, my resolve to make sure this is handled. So the outcome was that we won't be playing them, but does that letter indicate to you that we will not be playing NDCL for the twenty-three, twenty-four?
Let's see. Uh, Lakeside High School principal, Dr. Perkins diligently investigates such allegations, as you're aware. Um, Dr. Perkins also had multiple communication staff. We are where, uh, here we go, due to the egregious nature of these incidents, the Lakeside High School Boys Basketball Team would not play Notre Dame Cathedral, Cathedral Latin Boys Basketball Team during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And this is assigned, uh, John Rubicich and Dr. Perkins. Yes, to, uh, Mr. Joseph Whaler, the principal of Notre Dame.
Right, so yeah, so those are the things, so when I face optical, obstacles like that, I just continue, cause I am an elected official, right, duly elected, I'm a board member, so I don't let, um, let a superintendent, so that shows you his lack of respect, right? And then he, he sends an email saying that he won't, he will not speak with me anymore, right? Because accountability is an issue, right? Whether it's, as long as I'm the, uh, on this board, I'm accountable for the superintendent and the treasurer, and you will be held accountable. But here's the thing, when, when you have a superintendent, like Rubicich and Lisa Newsom, they have that board coverage, they feel untouchable, and that's what's going on currently with Lisa Newsom. She should have been held accountable for that, right? We didn't bring her in, as a board, talk to her, hey, tell us a little bit more about this, what services could we have provided?
But she was not the superintendent at the time, correct? She hadn't even been appointed.
But she's in the process, right? She gets hired February seventeenth, you know, when, when, I mean.
She gets appointed February seventeen.
I'm sorry, what are you asking me again? You're asking about Lisa Newsom, right?
Yeah, was she appointed already to this position?
No, she was going to, she's in the, she's in the, uh, hiring process, she hasn't been hired yet, we're still great to do our last three candidates. So this is during that process.
Right, but she's, so basically, her immediate supervisor would be Mr. Rubicich.
Yeah, so here's the thing, that my understanding, when administrators are at the game, they, they represent us, so she was at this game. So she is, she's responsible, right? So that's what we have, the Dr. Perkins, or whoever's administrators at that game, uh, we have at least one, they are responsible. They're reporting agents.
Right, I understand that, but their immediate supervisor, so the one who would hand down any kind of disciplinary action would be the pre, or the principal or the superintendent, correct?
Right, so well, here's what happened, but it, it wasn't reported, it's all, see, now, say Lisa would have reported the racial slurs to, say, Dr. Perkins, or to John Rubicich. Then there's no issue, but the thing is, it wasn't reported, it came to my attention. And then I addressed it, and then, then, then we start to push in this direction. And I, and I get all this opposition, and then I, I say, you know, uh, nah, we, we, something has to be done, so I was advocating then, right? This wasn't going to even be, this letter wouldn't even exist, had I not been persistent. See, when.
Would it have existed if she would have reported it?
Well, who knows, right? Cause then there would, then it wouldn't have been an issue to me, right? So once it gets to the board, though, that's where I feel like, all the chain of commands you talk about, the last thing you want is to get to the board. Well, if you have people reaching out, and you hear racial slurs, and I said, well, what, what did they do for the, the children of color? Did they go see the DEI director, release a home in, did they talk to the counselor at the school? I'm asking, don't, don't leave them hanging, right? And then you don't address it at all, and then you, 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 uh, take issue with me pursuant. And then you don't address it at all? And then you, you, you uh, take issue with me pursuing it? Well, take issue.
So, no more Lakeside versus Notre Dame. So, alright, so Skipper had a couple of days. Now Lisa Newsome is hired in. So why, why the motions to remove her?
Um, well. She, she showing, well, my opinion, right, which I, which I have as, as an evaluator of her performance. That right there didn't show me there was complete buy-in for all the kids, right? That concerned me. You showed me that, I don't like it. And then with the Laura Jones thing, right, calling down to the O S B A. Checking out, changing references, the names being added, all the shenanigans going on with it. We get to the end, the last three uh, candidates, Dr. Washington being one of them, who is the current assistant superintendent at that time. And um, the never, not going over Lisa's references, the body of work, kind of looking at it, that was what we're supposed to do. We get into, um, so this is how it works. When we're in executive session. You can't vote in a exec, executive session, take notes or anything like that. So you, you know, then you exit, and then that portion is public. And that's the only time you can vote. So, and then that's when we have discussion. So when we came out of executive session, I believe it was February seventeenth. I was told, let's take a five minute break, and then we'll look at all the information that we received, right? Cause they did finish all the interviews. Dr. Washington at that time gave us a. Letters of references from Dr. Potts, former superintendent, Mario Salie. Uh, former uh, assistant superintendent. It was called School Improvement at that time. And then another coworker was in central office. So I wanted to read those things, right? Cause they all interviewed, you know, everyone did, did well. And, and this will be an open process like it had in the past, right? This is how it had been going on. So I leave for a five minute break. Soon as I sit down, Mr. Nimi motions. And I say, well, hold on a second, we should talk about this. Um, they just continued to vote and Laura Jones abstained. Their mind was made up. It wasn't very open. And during that process, what, what wasn't mentioned by Mrs. Jones. We did, we did hire uh, Cheryl Orion for the O S B A. We hired her. And we hired her to conduct the interviews was when it came, maybe February eighth. Mr. Nimi sends an email, which I, which I sent to you, and I don't know if you would be able to pull it up. But Mr. Nimi sends an email telling Mrs. Ryan, we no longer need her. They're gonna go in their own direction. So I'm saying, all of a sudden, Mrs. Ryan is no longer.
Who sent the email?
Mr. Nimi. So it wouldn't be on the minutes, but there's an email I sent to you.
Uh, let's see.
Let's, I don't know, let's see what that would be under. Um, let's try, if you don't.
Second interview?
Yeah, let's try that, see if that's the email. Can we, hold on a second.
Check around the interviews.
Okay, right. Each candidate should be prepared.
Is this what we're looking for?
Let me, I'm not sure. Okay, can you get back up to the top for me, please?
Yep.
Let me see.
This is uh, February tenth?
Yeah, um, I'm looking for the eight, so keep, keep, keep coming, go back up for me, please.
Yeah, we're all the way up there.
Yeah, I mean, can you come back down? Okay, let's see. Anything with the uh, interviewing process. Try Friday. So, sorry about the uh. But let me continue on, and I'm sure you'll find it. So Mr. Nimi lets Mrs. Ryan know. Going forward, we don't need her services. And I'm thinking, well, she uh. So she, she's just showing you, these are the lines of um, the lineup for, for the interviewing process. So, so anyway, um, Mr. Nimi indicates to Mrs. Ryan, we don't, we no longer need her services. Now, we don't pay ten thousand dollars. Uh, what, so Mr. Nimi starts to take control of the process. Now, Miss Ryan indicated that she wanted us to interview the three candidates. And then afterwards have each individual candidate meet with maybe five members of the community. Right, to see how they felt about our next superintendent.
Whose proposed idea was this?
Uh, Cheryl Ryan from the O S B A. But Mr. Nimi is pushing back on these ideals, right? He says, nah, we don't need you anymore. We feel we're capable going on uh, without her services. So all of a sudden, they pump the brakes on uh, Cheryl Ryan, and then the school board takes over. These are just the questions. Um, let me see if I can help you. Let me see. Try, try the references. No, not, not that. But you'll find, but Cheryl's involved for a certain time, and then Mr. Nimi grabs the reign of it.
February eighth?
Let's take a look, keep going. Can you, can you go up to, my glasses are not as strong from this distance. Can you go up for me a little bit, buddy?
Go up?
Let me take a look. Hold on a second. Okay, no, it'll be, but the email, I'm sure you'll find it at some point. So, yeah, Mr. Nimi. And so I didn't like that. Let's see, where is this right here? I believe we will go on the individuals. Let me see. Wait a minute, I felt, send you a quick update for, okay, let's take a look. Let me see, but I believe we can go, yeah.
That's what we're looking for?
So no, let's get to the top here where it says the O S B A, let me, let's take a look. But I believe that all, in the first, the first paragraph right there said, but I believe that all will go well. Let me see. No, and I don't know if this is it. Let's take a look. Immediately present, so these are some of the suggestions she's making. But she's starting to get interference from the district. But I'm sure at some point you'll find the email. But Mr. Nimi starts to let her know that she's no longer needed. She was supposed to do this whole entire interviewing process. At no time should John Rubicich have been the mediator, and he was. Uh, he should not have been involved at all, cause I addressed concerns about that, right? He's a, he's an interim, and he's interviewing the candidates. I said, let Cheryl continue, but, but uh, they didn't allow that. Yeah, I seen it to you this morning.
So this is on January twentieth?
Take a look. Let's try, uh, I don't know if the, the computer will allow you, but I think I want to say it's uh, February eighth. I saw you have something for February tenth.
Yeah, let's see, let's go back. Uh, confirming.
It's something with Cheryl Ryan.
It's February tenth, references, February eighth from Cheryl. But you've already read that one.
Right, so, so yeah, so um, we'll, we'll, we'll continue on it, and if you find out at a later time, we'll go ahead and pop it up, right? So, yeah, so, so at, at some point, the board decides they don't need the O S B A anymore. And that's alarming to me, cause she's, she's doing such a great job, and Mr. Nimi's like, hey, we're gonna go in our own direction. We, we believe we can handle it for, handle this from here.
Let me see.
And that bothered me. And then we have Laura Jones, um, she, she would, she would indicate in her interview that when I made that motion. That she wasn't aware that Lisa was even interested in being interim. That isn't true, because on, on September fifth. What is this here? Can you, that yellow, can you pull that up? What is this right here? Okay, now that's just uh, letting uh, the choices, the things we're going to do. But uh, Laura Jones says in her interview that when I made the motion for her to be uh, you know, interim. That they weren't aware she was interested, but you know, through the email, September fifth, Lisa affirms. I don't know if you, you have that, but she affirms the fact that she wants to be. But Laura Jones says they didn't even know she wanted to do it. So that's, that's, that's not true at all. For her to make that statement was absolutely false.
On what day?
Look, look for um.
Did you send me this information as well?
Yeah, yeah, we looked, looked for confirmation, but we read it earlier. Try confirmation, where you'll see September fifth. Yeah, kind of look through there. Look, it said interest, conflict, uh, interest. I saw confirmation of interest.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I see what you're saying here.
Yeah, so that's September fifth, right?
Right, September fifth.
Right, and I made that motion for Lisa on the twenty-first.
Of September?
Right.
Okay.
At the board meeting. This is where I'm trying to pick her over Rubicich. But, but, but Laura Jones says that, they didn't know anything about it. They didn't know she wanted to do it, didn't express interest. I think Laura Jones says that, and that's, that's, that's not true at all. Laura Jones is on that email. Right, so those are the things, I tell you, that was very frustrating for me, to watch Laura Jones sit there and not be totally honest. You know, and I'm being kind about that. That woman was being very evasive. Not truthful at all. And I always say that you can lie to me, but you can't lie on me. And she was doing just that, lying on me.
How so? What, what are you referring to when she's, when you say that?
Well, when she says um, harassing her. Uh, you know, threatening her, you know, just, just. Having this picture of being like, how, how do we say it socially now? When we have people that are over the top, we call them Karens, right? Having that perception of, of, of a Karen behavior, and I, I don't care for it. And she indicated she filed two police reports against me. She says that she sent me a, a, a cease and desist letter. And with that being said, if, if I may. Lisa Newsome sent me a cease and desist letter, false allegations against me. April nineteenth, before she was even being hired on June first. So I, so when you ask me, what are the indicators? Why I don't want her there? That's one, that's one of many. But one being, if you, if I'm going to consider hiring you June first, but on April nineteenth, you tell me you're gonna cease and desist me? I'm a board member on the nineteenth. And then I get censured on the nineteenth for one by the board. On April twenty-sixth, seven days later, I get a, a cease and desist letter from Laura Jones? Why, why would I want her to be the superintendent? And then you turn around on the nineteenth, I say, hey, and then Ms. Seifer comes back in the building, April twenty-first? Well, I got a problem with that. And when I brought that up to the board, when they found, when they found out that I knew Ms. Seifer was still coming into the high school after these horrific allegations. And she still permitted, Mr. Nimi gives me that, well, there's nothing legally we can do about it. Maybe he kind of has that possession on it. But nonetheless, right, don't talk about safety of the kids. Don't tell me the kids come first. When you're allowing this person to continue to be around our kids, you're telling the community, you don't care. You know, and when I say that, it brings up some feelings, cause I was there. You know, and when that, you know, if, since I'm on that, let me, let me expound on that, if I may. When I received that letter, December fifteenth of twenty-twenty-one, it changed my life. And I knew a lot of the people. Uh, and, 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 and that were involved with these possible allegations, like I said, initially, you know, allegations. And. One of uh, the survivors reaches out to me and says, the allegations pertaining to me are true. Excuse me. And then I tell the school board president, he doesn't want to hear it, he hangs up on me. And then I call for her resignation, and this is, this has been, and this is the, this is the consequences that I'm receiving then till now. And I'm okay with that. That's my responsibility as a board member to make sure that I stand up for the people that voted for me, for my community, and for what's right. But ever since that happened to me, right, it's been non-stop. Mr. Nimi, Dr. Bearman, you know, um, um, you know. It, it, and then, and Laura Jones, and even though you don't hear Rapu's, when he votes against me, he, he's complicit, right? So, and uh, and so there's, there's a lot there. But when I saw tho, when I saw those survivors come to the board meeting. And speak out against those allegations, and I watched the way the board treated those people. I watched Mrs. Seifer take herself home, putting it in their faces, what they're talking about, the experiences that, that they suffered under her. And the board not allowing those people to speak. They don't want to talk about that. The behavior of this board is despicable. And. Um, and, and you know, and I try to have a forgiving heart. I think, hey, you know, um. You, you gotta still be, do board business and work through it. But when you constantly, you know, like. Once Mr. Nimi mentioned that about Sammy Torres, that he didn't like what he said about Ms. Seifer and the allegations. I knew that. I was going to feel the retaliation as a board member. I also uh, have said publicly, I knew that the minorities in the district would also suffer. And that's why you see, we don't have minorities in place. I knew that there's gonna be consequences for me standing up. And I have to live with that, and I'm okay with that. But I have to live with the fact that I watched Mrs. Westerfield. It was the most amazing thing I've ever seen, to watch a mom come up there and tell it, to tell what Ms. Seifer had done to her daughter. And to watch her poise. And I knew at that time, but I, I need a lot of Jesus. Cause I don't think I could have, I could have went through that and handled that like Mrs. Westerfield did. And for the board to be disrespectful to the community as a whole. Like I said, it was, it was detestable, it was disgrace.
So what are some of the actions that uh, that you, that you detest?
Well, it just, um, not allowing them to speak at public participation, but when it comes to their friends, right? The people that they like, oh, they get a lot of time, like I'll give an example. Um, it's just the treatment, right? Um, who can talk and who can't, right? So we had a, we had a situation where Molly Petros came up during public participation. It was kind of singling me out. So I, I told the board president, hey, you gotta stop that. She can't. So he stops her. The board meeting ends. She comes right back down to the mic. Laura Jones remains in her seat, Dr. Bearman, and Nimi remains in her seat, and she talks about me for another fifteen minutes. They let her continue to come after me and did nothing about it, cause they don't care. They don't, they don't care to have me there. But guess what? The community does. And I'm gonna find out if they will continue that on Tuesday. So though, it's, it's, it's just, there's, there's a line of that, right?
So you're saying like um, like a bias?
Oh, yeah.
Because they wouldn't let, they didn't want some people to speak, but they would allow others to speak.
And that's the behavior.
So when you make a lot of these motions and, you know, throw a lot of these uh, allegations, and you make the, the papers. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of talk of you, you know, being rude or, or uh, throwing insults at members of the public. Or board members harassing statements, threatening statements. I mean, how, how true, I haven't, I haven't been to a board meeting, but I know there's, you know, been articles. Um, there are obviously letters, uh, cease and desist, letter, uh, censures, you know, things like that. I mean, there's gotta be some truth to it. How do you, I, I, and I can understand why you would feel so passionately and want to voice your opinion. Um, but don't you agree that there's, there's a way of going about things?
Yeah, so, yeah, so you know, I can't control the pen. I say that all the time, right? If you read the Gazette, opposed to the Star Beacon, you'll see Gazette's more accurate in the, in their, in their editorial, right? So I would just say to that, like, not name calling, those kind of things. So here's what happens. You know, when I told you when I show up, and I'm just finding out for the first time. Um, when I want to address it, I, pre, before there's a board meeting, right? Like you said, the executive sessions, they recess, they smack the gavel then. So what you see in public, they do behind the scenes with me to try to censor me, right? So I say, you know what? That's okay. I'm not in an environment where I feel that I can be heard, right? So I, so I say sometimes, okay, I have a concern, and when I get to the public, I'm going to speak out, cause I'm able to. Right, since this is how it works. A board member can speak anytime he chooses. He doesn't have to follow the, the agenda. If I have a concern, I can speak, I can make motions, I can do those things. I have equal authority like everyone on that board, right? So I said, we all have twenty percent, right? So when I'm there, and I know what's going to get them, you know, they may get upset. When I start to question, it's a problem. It's just, it's just public record. Like when I say, hey, Laura Jones through the district, why would you appoint her? Cause what I can't do, you can't call the executive session and say you want to talk about a board member. If you have something to say to a board member, you have to do it in public. See, so when you ask that question, when people say, hey, it's not like that. I can't, would, if I have something to say, I have to say it there. That's why when I had to say something on Ms. Seifer, I want her to step down. I had to say that to her there in public.
So the um, the censure.
Right.
That was at public? Did they, did they say in public, or was that uh, in an executive session?
Okay, so here's what happened with the censure. Remember I told you I received a cease and desist letter on the nineteenth? I didn't know the censure was coming. That's why you see me reacting. Hold on a second. And I'm, I'm calling for an adjournment, cause I hear they're coming after me. See, they're not supposed to do that. Now, I've spoken to the school attorney. He, he, he can't tell the board what to heal. He can't tell the board what to heal and advise them. Hey, I don't recommend you do that. And he has shared with me, he has told them sometimes some of their actions. I don't recommend you do that.
When you say they can't do that, what is that?
I'll say can't, but to to disparage me. Right? So you're accusing me of things. Where's your proof? Right? Just because you say it don't make it gospel. So when I'm sitting there. I don't know. I don't know about the censure at all. So that's why I react. I'm trying to stop them. Hold on a second. You can't be talking to me like you can't talk about me like that. So I'm trying to adjourn the meeting. Whatever they're attempting to do, I'm trying to stop it because I don't know what's going on. Because I just got a cease and desist letter and then I'm getting censured.
But couldn't that go the same way for Laura Jones whenever you're trying to bring up uh? You know, maybe the lawsuit or the uh relationship between her and Lisa Newsome?
Well, here's the thing. I'm not making allegations. You see, I'm saying.
I mean, you are, though. I mean, your allegation.
My allegations, well, they have to be.
You're saying unfounded.
Right, right, unfounded, right? So my allegations are not unfounded, right? I'm telling you concerns that I have. I want to address them. You know, like, like, like. You know, when you say that part, so remember when you had the um how quickly they uh chose Lisa Newsome? Well, I I was going to address the concerns with Laura Jones calling down to the OSBA at that time with the board. See, they don't allow me to address it. At that time, when we're down to those three, I was going to tell the board, hey, you know, you know Laura Jones called down to the OSBA and switched out a name? Do you know what she's calling Laura uh Cheryl Ryan and and being influential in this matter? I'm trying to tell the board, but I don't have the chance, you see? When you sit down and you make a motion to hire her, I don't get to talk. See here, this is how it works. When you make a motion, when someone seconds it, then there's a discussion.
Right.
And then you can vote how you want. At least let me tell you how I feel. So they do it behind the scenes. If you don't see it, that's fine, because I've learned, okay? When I get a chance, I'll do it at another time. And that's why you see the unloading, if you will, at that time. But um. You know, but that censors, they're all allegations, right? And now I don't know the censure that well because I I could care less about it. But to 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 do that, that you know, remember I'm getting. Uh, she mentioned filing two police reports, right? And you kind of follow criminality, right? Well, there's no charge because there's no crime. Right? Not not warned enough there was to be a charge, but who is doing that? We're talking about a board member. Right? That's doing that to me as well. And like I said, if Lisa Newsome's going to send me a cease and dis deceased. Cease and desist letter on the nineteenth of April, and then Laura Jones does it on the twenty sixth of April, seven days later. What's that telling you? Right? It's constant. So guess what? You know, let me let me say this if I can. And if I could say it to anybody, I would say this to the whole community. I'm not a troublemaker, but I make good trouble. Right? You you keep. Um, isolating me, having meetings without me. Uh, because they have, they can do that, no matter how I feel about it. If they want me to be misinformed as a board member, they can do that. And there's, you know, you and I can go through all these emails and you'll see that. They they'll make a decision without involving me. And whether I like it or not, they're going ahead without me. And that's just the way it is. That's what they do. But that's why. In forty eight hours or more, we have a chance to change that pattern. There's good old boy network, there's nepotism, there's connection, knowing this person, we need this change. It's very important. If you if I don't have majority of this board, I can't make the change that I was elected to do. I'm just one person against four.
What changes would you see? Would you like to see?
Well, um, you know, starting at the top. Right? And um. Because here's here's the thing, uh, we've learned in this experience experience. You can hire somebody, right? But you can't, that doesn't mean they have they have the ability to empower, right? So this is just facts. The hiring of Lisa Newsome. Before she got hired, I would hear rumblings, you know, Lisa's going to be the next super superintendent. You know, my opinion was, well, she's been denied. More than maybe a few times. I can't. I can't see it. I'm there. I'm in the interviews. But that was the the consensus, right, of staff and teachers or whomever. And they they and they sent letters to to myself and I think maybe other board members, because I would see the board members on these letter, but doesn't mean. They received them because they they came to my house, to my personal address. And they would say, hey. Uh, or 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 whether it's written or expressed to me. If you hire her, I'm leaving. And I and I thought it was just. Emotional reactions, right? Oh, you know, we'll see. You know, maybe they just. Um, don't want to work with her. Not really sure what's going on. We had a massive. Massive exit from the district. The people who promised to leave, they left, and we continued to lose people. I've never seen nothing like it. So even though you choose a superintendent, they don't want, they don't have the ability to empower. Nobody wants to be in our district right now. So that's the change I want to address. What is going on? That's that's um people have been here twenty something years. They're leaving the district. They're going elsewhere. They want nothing to do with it. We just had a we just had our. Football coach resigned. Right? But Edward stepped down, right? I'm not saying that Lisa related, but what's going on, right? Um, we, you know. That this is what I've been told. I haven't been able to verify, but last I knew, right? So let me just say this as information received. We've lost a hundred and fifty students. Already this year, we lost a hundred, I think sixty two last year, cost us almost one point three million dollars. We the the number I've heard recently. Uh, like I said, I haven't yet to verify a hundred and fifty. I am also hearing, we're averaging three to four students a week leaving the district.
Going to another district.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, for whatever reasons, right? We're we we're asking, you know, we can't pass a levy. We're asking people to give us their money and we don't manage it. Right? What are we doing, right? Well, you know, the excuse is, well, we were filming before the pandemic. We have the pandemic, you know, we're 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 kind of through that, the meat of that. But there were schools that stayed. Stayed afloat during the pandemic, you know, we're you know, we don't have accountability here. Right? And my voice sounds different. Uh, because I want to make a difference. So all those things, you see the papers and stuff, you know, I don't like it, right? But God, God, God tells me that it's going to be some long suffering, it'll be talked about, it'll be mistreated. And you think I like it? I don't. Does it take its toll on me? Sometimes it does. And but. I have to stay the course. Now, this change is very important, and I'm looking forward to Tuesday. I'll take I'll tell people I've been in this for twenty years and I'm I'm waiting for my Jesus back. Because no matter what happened Tuesday, God's gonna let me know, and I want to know that. God, do you want me to continue forward? With a new board to really help this community? Or do you want me to go and go and and be positive? Maybe another community, another school system, because I have a lot of talent. And I want I want to give it to these kids. I can go in. I don't have to be here. I want to be here. Right? I'm not here because my mom's a superintendent. Right? I'm here because I want to be, you know, there's, you know, there's just something about this calling. You think that I would if if. If God would have asked me, you you want to do this, I'd have been like, one, I wouldn't think I was capable. I wouldn't think I would have the endurance to do so. But this journey has taught me that that when you have a calling on your life. God will give you everything that you need to keep enduring, right? God said, not to the swift, but those who endure to the end. And I think that I'm at the end of this thing, that we can stop all this nonsense, this failing of the district and start going in a positive direction.
So you talked about mismanaging of money. How what areas are they mismanaging it in?
So if if I had to give a financial opinion, you know, not the treasure, but based on the financial information that I have. So the finance, they're really selective, right? So we know we had the asset funds and that in in essence, the asset funds from allowed us to right our ship. You know, it wasn't very like regulated, right, to my understanding. So here here's a part of money. Do what you have to do to fix your district, right? And if you don't, and we didn't, I don't think we managed that well, right? So. When we build a maybe a ten, ten plus million dollar transportation unit, I want that for transportation. But when our deficit is only maybe two point seven million, then why didn't you cover that?
What do you mean? The difference for what?
Like, so say, for example, we. So initially, I was told this. So say we had eighteen million dollars, right? So there's phases of the asset fund, right? Well, you know, we'll give you in this phase, attempt to do this, maybe work on your construction, work on your staff. So we're kind of kind of like a guide, right, to spend this funding. So and then we can proportion that. So for example, when. When we got to the transportation unit. You know, it's going to cost us maybe twelve million dollars. The school deficit was two point seven million, right? Uh, which means we can't operate in the deficit. So let's pay the two point seven million if we have these millions of dollars. Well, initially I was told, you know, hey, we're gonna cover it. The split of that eighteen million is going to be seventy percent transportation and then thirty percent for staffing. So I'll say, okay, then we can cover that two point seven million dollars in the district.
As far as the staffing, would that be?
And to be able to cover, you know, any any riff, right, to make sure no one could lose a job. So that initially I was told. So here's here's the thing I'll tell you about when when they don't want you to be informed. You know, the power is at B, I guess. So initially I'm told seventy thirty. So I'm not thinking there's a ref coming. Now, this is the understanding that I'm receiving, right? Whether they can.
Because you're expecting the thirty percent to go towards staffing.
Right, to handle that deficit. Now, they may tell you differently, and they may be right in their difference. I'm just saying what they're telling me. And then the number changes to eighty twenty. Well, who's who's doing that? Now, all of a sudden, we got a rift. See, that that's the thing about. Following the money.
But isn't that part of the um? The board's decision to approve?
Right. So so here's the thing. Well, if if so, here's where it gets tricky. When you're misinformed, well, man, you're going to go on what you got. So you're you're going to vote maybe, you know, to um, um, um. To go forward with the transportation. So there's sometimes, hey, maybe in hindsight, right? There's some decisions I maybe want to vote, I would have voted differently, but it doesn't change the outcome, right? And that's what what has been discouraging, right? Even when I want to make a change, that's why you'll see a lot of times, you'll see a lot of four one uh uh in the minutes with me. Because I'm learning something and I can't stop it. And here's the thing, too, I try to tell people, you know, so for example, we're allowed to have maybe. Forty one meetings a year, right, as a board.
But there's a limit on how many meetings you can have?
I think it is. So maybe forty one a year, right?
That's interesting.
Right? And then we're and we're capped at five thousand dollars. We can't make over five thousand dollars.
What do you mean?
So uh. Salary wise, a board member in in our in our district, we cannot make over five thousand dollars in a year. So we don't get, we don't get paid much. So we get paid by per meeting, right? So we're allowed to have, I believe it's forty one a year. And we only have. One a month, two a month, you know what I mean? And I I tell the board, we should meet more. So we can address the issues, but when their mind's made up and they know what direction they want to go in. It makes me powerless, even though I believe, right? And that's that's the challenge that I'm having. You know, let's meet more. Well, no, we don't need to meet more because we already know what we're going to do. So what I say don't matter. Right? But it matters to me. And as long as it matters to me, I'm gonna keep on speaking up. And that's the way it's going to be. This board, um, um. And people say be professional and do those things and um. And I do have energy, but uh to paint the picture that I'm on him, nah, you know, you keep gab like you keep gaveling me. Uh, you keep uh police reports and, you know, you you know the history. Well, man, it makes you feel a certain way. Right? I'm born and raised here, too. I put my work in. Now, all the board members, you just want to put in your work in. I did. I was thirty two years old when I started this thing. I'm fifty five, like I said, right? So you know, I got some equity in it. And so. Um, for me to walk away, man, I got. Or for me to be done, I got to make sure I did all that I could, right or wrong in difference. Sometimes, you know, in a fight, you land some, you miss some, right? But I fought.
So you, Sammy Torres and Darius Williams are kind of running. Almost as like a a trio, a combo, right?
Right.
Um, what are they going to bring to the board? Uh, that's going, I I guess what's the point of of bringing them along with you?
Yeah, so I would say. So like, for example. You know, just kind of add to that. So what I've kind of learned in in that relationship with them, so. Like Laura Jones, maybe I've seen her one time for a student of the month, but I never see her. I didn't see her come to any board meeting, but then she's appointed. And then I watch another candidate. They're like jumping off the couch and jumping into this race. Well, with Darius and and Mr. Torres or Sam Torres and Williams, they've been at the board meeting the last last two years. You know, not perfect attendance, but enough. I recognize them, right? So often and consistently being engaged, calling me, asking. Um, asking, you know, how can they help, you know? And for them to make that decision to run, they didn't do it lightly. And then they talk about this perspective, like I said, like. Sometimes you can be in a time of your life and you think you get it and you don't. And I always say, I don't want to be that parent, right? You got to be with the times, right? So I'm like, I'm like a veteran in a way, and they're they're the new the new guys. So I want to hear from them, you know, how can, what what perspective can you bring? Okay, Tim, this is how kids, um, you know, they communicate this way through texting. Or they they like to learn through um these type of apps. So they give us the tools we need to maybe educate differently. Maybe what I think is still. Current may not be. Well, Tim, you know, kids don't really um um tolerate that no more. Or kids, I feel this way, right? So what's current, right? So I think Sammy Torres and they they bring. What's current, right? They bring perspective, and then they bring relatability. And they can say, hey, you know, that idea, so but let let me add to this. They can tweak an idea. They can add to it. They can create. They can evolve uh an opportunity, and I think we need that. You know, I'm not against ageism, anything like that, but if you're seventy five on the board, right? And you haven't been, you don't know the price of milk, then how can you be effective?
Yeah, uh, I would I would say that experience.
Right.
You know, experience, they've got tenure, they've got um. You know, some of the the board member, the other candidates uh that are running are currently on the board. They've they know this. Um, this arena, they know how how the order of operations, they know how things work. So uh I think that definitely plays a big role.
Right? So to that point, so they have experience too, right? They they have experience in the life that they live, the relatability. But here's the thing, what good is experience if we're still a failing district, right? Right? I say that you could be married for twenty years, doesn't mean you're in a good marriage, right? You're just in it, right? So if you have board members that say they have experience, well. You know, I I've been in the classroom, you know, and Mr. Nimi's a CPA, Laura Jones just, I guess. Been on multiple boards or or committees. Rapus has been involved in in the district. And and Dr. Bearman maybe has some educational experience, but what but we don't have application, so what does it matter, right? So we have alums, right? So Darius Williams is an alum of Lakeside, Sammy Torres is too, and they're connected to the community, right?
I think everybody who's running is is an alum from.
Well, yeah, yeah, but I'm I'm just saying pretending pretending to them when you ask, right? And then we have a business background, you know, with none of the candidates, but we already have a CPA up there, right? So I'm just saying, like. Let's try something new. Let's hear for them. So maybe the Darius and the, you know, Sammy has a four four and go podcast. And he may draw an audience, right? He he uh may uh develop a platform where we can communicate. I talked about that earlier. Darius Williams may have that ability. Well, it's it's let's let's try something new, right? What we're doing isn't working, right? You think I'm proud to be a part of a board that that's failing? I am not.
I was going to say, I mean, you've been on the board for four years and.
Right, so we're a D. Right, so so here's the thing. And 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 we're funny and I don't like it, because let me let me tell you, if I could say this on a personal level. So the way I was raised, right? My mom, and I know most people might say I was biased, but I'll say this about my mom. My mom is an expert. Everything my mom does, she does it. To her very best. I've never lived in a dirty home. Always had the best of the best. My mom is amazing. And so my mom. She never taught me the word can't, even to this, even my daughters don't even understand that. You tell them they can't do something, they say, well, I can try again, right? So I don't even know what. What failure is, right? I I hear what people tell them, but I don't believe in it. Right? And that's why I struggle being this, because I see that I can help. But when I'm prevented from being helped, I struggle, right? So the way I'm raised is. Failure wasn't an option. You got to get up and try again. There's no number in trying. So being a part of a board that's failing, yeah, that's that's hard for me, because I'm telling you right now, if God says the same. And I grab control of this board, this district, when I fail, will be one of the most elite districts in the county. That I promise. I would never sit. In a position and not help these kids. I know how to do it. God gave it to attend me to do it. And that sincerely, I'm telling this to me, I can do this.
Can you do it? Let's say you uh. You pick up the two year C. And then you have Scott Yap and Mr. Rapuse on the board. Are you gonna be able to do it?
Well, it's, that's tricky because they haven't been at the board, I haven't talked to them. I don't know their ideologies, right?
What Mr. Rapuse you've been on the board with for four years?
Well, well, here's what I learned about that, about that relationship. I'm glad you brought that up. So when, when, when we went to hire, um, Mrs. Rapuse, right? I, I, me personally, there was a change in Mr. Rapuse after that. Because you feel obligated, right? The board hires your wife. You don't wanna really stink it up a little bit, cause you don't wanna have the board change that situation. So I believe it, it, it caused the obligation. Cause initially I felt he was more open to what I had to say, but once that happened, there was a change. And so let me give you an example of that. When you, when you take board favors, you feel like you owe them. Uh, that's my opinion. So I'll give you an example. Mr. Rapuse repeatedly said to the board and myself, he's not running again. But all of a sudden he ran. And so, and with that, when I called to the board of elections, I asked, who was Rapuse's circulators? It was Rapuse circulated a sheet. Each sheet holds twenty.
Circulator.
A circulator is, uh, someone who goes and gets petition, um, and gets signatures for you to get on the ballot.
Okay.
Each petition holds twenty. And then they, they have to be qualifying signatures, right? I mean, you're registered voter and that, that signature will count as, um, you, you have to get seventy-five, no more than two twenty-five. So Rapuse, when I called, the information was given to me, Rapuse submitted a petition, one. And then his wife, uh, submitted two sheets. Well, there's twenty apiece that, that, and if they were qualifying signatures, that'd be sixty. Well, you need seventy-five. Well, the other circulators were Mr. Nimi and Dr. Berickman. And here we have board members getting, right? I mean, they can, right? Like you said, sometimes they just don't, but here we have two board members circulating for another board member to get on the ballot. So, cause you feeling like you owe them, you know, so that's the relationship I, I'll be concerned about having with Mr. Rapuse. And as far as Mr. Yap, but I haven't heard from him. I know who he is. And, um, hmm, if I'm, I s- I say this with a little, a little hesitation, I gotta tell you. So I have blood ties with Yap, Scott Yap. He's my cousin. But I didn't endorse him. Because he wasn't at the meetings. And hasn't been, I haven't seen him not one. Now he's family, but there's no way I was going to endorse him because he's my cousin. It wasn't be, it wouldn't be fair for me to say, I don't want Harrison and Sammy after they put all this work in. So that list, you know, that, I, I, you know, I, I was fair about it. Now, if he gets on this board, you know, um, you know, we'll, we'll see, right? But I'm just, I'm just seeing that now, right? That, um, cause, because if I was supporting nepotism, right? I would, I would just would endorse him. Now, had he came and he had perspective, then he may have the opportunity for me to support him. Now, even if it wasn't that's a team, but he never came.
Yeah. So, uh, just to be clear, because I know some people are going to ask why he's not being interviewed for this, uh, during this little series, we did reach out to him and he apparently had, uh, travel conflicts.
Right.
As far as schedule goes, so he wasn't able to make it. Um, but to be honest, I did look, I've looked, uh, just because I'm, I'm curious on his perspective. I'm curious on his, his stance on a lot of things. Um, I, I didn't find much of any information out there regarding his, his, uh, his candidacy and why he would be, you know, the, the perfect fit or a, the better fit, I should say, for, uh, for the seat. So, yeah, so if you, anybody's got information, we'd love to, I'd love to know about it.
Yeah, it, it's tricky like that. So that's what I wanna see changed. We don't, some of the changes, that, right? Like, uh, you, like you said, you want the person best for the job, right?
Right.
So, and I do too, right? I just don't want you to be able to come in because you make the best, uh, apple pie and lemon cookies at your church, right? Um, cause this is very serious, right? Like I said earlier, this is the heartbeat. You know, when you have, uh, a high performing school, school, right? It brings, it helps the housing market, right? It means people wanna live here. It brings, uh, camaraderie. And, you know, we, we, we desperately, we need that. And I really, I really believe, and I try to talk, uh, as sincerely as I can, um, there's no doubt in my mind. If you give me Darius Williams and Sammy Torres on Tuesday and all the commitment I put in for the last twenty years, it'll be nothing compared to the commitment I'm willing to put in going forward.
So, but you're only, you're, your seat would only be for two years.
Right. So here's, so here's was the vision on that. Well, they're in for four. So in twenty twenty-five,
You would have to run again. You would have to campaign again.
Well, there's three seats up, right? So Darius and Sammy would remain in their seats for additional two more.
Right.
And then it'd be three seats up.
It would be your seat if you get, if you get elected, it would be.
My seat, Dr. Berryman and Mr. Nimi.
Right.
Well, then we can take a look at it. It's a time for me, you know, maybe those two form other relationships in the community. And maybe there's three people that are, that need to be in there. Maybe somebody a little bit can, can finish where I started, right? I can't stay there forever, but we have to start to farm a system, right? This is a two-year continuous entity that changes often, right? But it's, we, we can't stop, start, be in, intermittent like we are, right, with no progress. So let's, let's see what that looks like in twenty twenty-five. Do I need to stay on for another four? Or have Sammy, um, Torres and Darius Williams done enough progress or built relationships in the community? Have a buy-in, then that buy-in might promote people to come out and run for those seats. And not, at some point, the district has to be in good hands. I can't stay forever. And if that's the case, then I can make a different decision at that time.
Right. Uh, you think you can get change done in, in two years?
Well, the first thing I would do, we, we have, we have to, um, start the foundation, right? And then let's, and just evaluate that more often and consistently and just see what that looks like. You know how like, uh, sometimes you let a problem go on too long? Well, guess what? We can meet more, right? Not just an average of twenty plus. No, let's meet more. If we can meet three, some months, three or four times in a month to get the, to get it going, to get the buy-in. You know, the first two, the first two years are gonna be maybe the foundational work. And then we'll just keep looking at it. Cause when I tell you that Mr. Torres and Darius would be involved in this community, whether it be four-four and go, the West Side Shootout, you name it. So here's what we're going to find out. We're gonna find vo- voices that we never heard from with this type of election. And now you have someone thirty, thirty-seven, fifty-five, the demographics are kinda covered. And we have a chance to listen to a lot more people and that's the goal of it, the objective.
Yeah, but I mean, the dist- or the board's hand is kinda tied on a lot of situations because a lot of things has, have to be brought up from, uh, the administration. So from the treasurer, from superintendent, right? I mean, that's the, the board's main focus is the treasurer and the superintendent. So how do, no, I, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but
Okay.
Maybe the, the board can bring issues up in particular, um, that need to be addressed. But a lot of times that would be basically delegated back down to the administration, correct?
Right. So let, let's just say, and if it was the board that I, I would, I would like to have. So really that communication with that superintendent, right? This is what our, what we would like to see happen. How can we develop those plans strategically? How they fall in line with their vision and how, how do we execute that? And then, then, then you meet with the levels. Then let's talk to the other administrators, right? Let's talk to the teachers. And so even if that's, you know, not being traditional, even that, that's more, uh, professional development days. Even, so when I tell you, we have to make sacrifices. If that means that we need to meet with twenty teachers every Saturday for the next six months, we have, we have to start somewhere. And you know what? And everybody's gonna have to do a little bit more, right? We have a lot of work to do. So whatever that is, if the teachers say, hey, uh, um, uh, all the kindergarten teachers like to meet with the board, we have to listen to them with the superintendent. You know, this, and then talk to, how can we find it? Can we fundraise? What do we have to do to, to finance this opportunity? You know, maybe developing, um, pilot programs, right? We'll say, okay, here's a pilot program, but maybe preparing to, pretending to attendance. Let's try it this way. And then tweaking it, you know, getting it right. So we have to be very innovative. So we're gonna try things and think outside the box. What that, what that is, we won't know till we get there in some cases, right? So that's the board I wanna be. You, you gotta tell me. I can't, go ahead.
Uh, well, I was just gonna say, one thing, um, I had a conversation about with Mr. Rapuse is consistency. So I, I know there are a lot of these pro- pilot programs. I know he's mentioned when he was a principal. Uh, he, you know, would, would have these programs that, you know, when the new superintendent would come in, they would kind of, you know, demolish that program. And, uh, and I fear with a lot of changes, especially, you know, you're on, you know, if you, if you, if you get elected to this seat, it's only for two years. Is that enough time to see if, you know, the changes that have been made are working or not? We, we're always switching things up. Uh, I fear that could be kind of to our own demise. I, I feel like it could be a detriment instead of a benefit to, to the district.
And so that, that's, that's, that's a luck of the draw, right? Every two years, every odd year, we, we elect, you know? And so that, that's the thing, these seats rotate three, two, three, two, three, two, right? We just happen to be this, we just happen to have this opportunity because of an appointment seat. So really, Mr., uh, Mr. Rapuse in my seat was up this year, right? So that it's, it's, it's a rotation all the time. And that, and that's the hope when I say, um, in the two years, forming the relationships, right? With, um, the perspective of, uh, um, Darius and Sammy, you know, I guess we won't know until we get there, right? You know, what does it look like? Maybe we have, you know, we may have ten people running for school board. We may have a group of people or maybe Sammy, you know, that, uh, and, and Darius have formed relationships that are very similar and we keep it going. And with the community involvement, we'll be held accountable, right? And we'll have that push and support, right? It, it's a collective effort from everybody. And, and so because we've never been there, who has all the answers, right? When we get there, we'll see what we have, right? If God says the same, right? So I, 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 I know that we're capable. I know I care about these kids. I know that we have them. Some kids come in five, six years old. We have them all the way to their eighteen, nineteen years old, right? And what we do for them, right? Uh, uh, can be beneficial or not. We can't have a kid go from kindergarten through our system to a senior and they're reading at a fourth grade reading level, right? Cause here's, here's, you know, and there, and there's a lot of mindsets we have to change in that, right? But we have these kids and we have to make sure they're developed to be in this world, right? So that, that's what I think about. These, these are young, young people coming in, wanna change the system. Give them the hope, give them their dream in their lives, right? It's like when you go to a restaurant, you have a menu and then everybody eats the same, but you still have to serve them according to what they're, they're, so we have to learn to meet all the needs of these kids in different ways. So it's, it's a mindset that we have to work on too. Man, you know, easier said than done. But we gotta start somewhere and we're gonna start there Tuesday.
So I think, uh, one of the things that was brought to my attention as far as, uh, let's see if I can find it, as far as the report card and, yeah, let's see, see if I can get this pulled up. Flash Tbilah City Schools. Uh, district at a glance. District details. Uh, here we go. So Mr. Rapuse brought this up to me in our interview. Almost fifty percent of the, the students' chronic absenteeism. I mean, in order for kids to do well, they have to show up. How do we get kids to actually show up to school? Or what is a co- you know, why, why do we have almost fifty percent of the, the student body with chronic absenteeism?
Yeah, you know, like, you know, that's a good question. I, I guess we would probably ask some of those students, right? What, what is it? Are you being bullied? Is it after you got a taste of being online, right? You like being in your own environment? Are we creating an environment for them to come to our school? You know, like, what, what is that cause? You know, is there something going on at home? Is it homelessness? Is it drug addiction affecting your life? The lack of sleep? You know, there's so many societal factors that we can't measure, right?
Right.
So until we ask, what is it that makes you not wanna be, be here, right? What is it? Like, you know, the way we grew up, that wasn't an option, right? You're going to school. So what is changing the parent, the, you know, parentally? Um, why is, the, the kids may not be, not being held accountable, right? So I think that we, we have to ask that question. What, so, so I would say that too. Um, let me say this for an example. It's not related to attendance. So for example, when we had, uh, students leaving the district. And I wanna say Dr. Potts at the time, he sent out five hundred surveys to ask me, what, what is it that makes you leave actually their city schools? Only thirty-nine people, I believe, responded.
Out of five hundred?
I believe. It was around, if my, if I remember that correctly. So that's the thing, like even gathering the data.
It's hard.
It's hard. It's hard. Cause you wouldn't think, you know, that it would be that low. I was really shocked by that conversation. Those numbers changed a little bit later after that conversation. I'm not aware of, but that conversation that I had particularly with Dr. Potts, that was real disheartening. Like, I don't know, they're like, well, I don't wanna talk to you anymore. I don't wanna be in the district and, and that's that. And I don't owe you a response. But it sure would have been helpful. Is it, is it a curriculum? Is it the environment? You know, is it, is it, you know, uh, did you move away? You know, we weren't able to gather that information to find out. So hopefully, we can start to ask those questions. But it's like I said, the buy-in may change that, right? So we, we have to start somewhere. So let me, let me say this. You know, um, Les Brown, um, motivational speaker, um, late, Les Brown says that you don't have to be great to start, but you do have to start to be great, right? So we have to start to be great. And that's, and that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I think that's a very accurate statement. Cause you're not going to be great when you start.
Right.
You have to start in order to, uh, to get to greatness.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Um, let's see where we at here. So going back to the, um, the chronic absenteeism. Now, I would imagine a lot of that has to do with, uh, transportation, I would imagine, or parents holding their kids accountable. But we have the resources, especially with technology, where if these kids can't make it to school, they can still get their work. How do we incorporate the kids who maybe can't make it to school all, all the time? Um, how do we get them to still participate? Yeah, and, 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 you know, finish their work and get these grades up.
Yeah, so that's tricky too. So, you know, um, I, I kept my kids home, right? Uh, during the pandemic one year. And so it, it's real tricky because you don't know, your, your kids can tell you, oh, mama, I, I did the work. And then it's hard, you know, they, they don't, they don't log in. Excuse me. They don't log in some, in some cases. So it's really hard to manage it that way too. Either, either the kids held accountable or not. And then when, when you have a parent that's maybe working, you got, yeah, mom, I did it. I sent it in. And then if you have a parent that's not technology savvy, they can show their parents, you think, see right here, mom, I sent it in. Might not be the case. So it's just hard. It's like something has changed. You know, and I, I talk about the technological, uh, the digital age, right? It just, it's different how they learn. Sometimes I think, do we have it right? Are we, are we behind? Because they can assess information. They say, what, why is the teacher saying it that way when I can just look at YouTube? They might see something that it's, it's more simple to learn this way. So that's why we need to integrate what, what we think we know, right? But is that factual? And so talking to these kids, they say, hey, you know, I, I, I learn better when I watch the video that teaching me, um, um, algebra. The, or the way he's saying it makes me comprehend it better than the positive way I'm saying it. Like what, what is the learning style, right? Do you like to see it? Do you like to put your hands on it? Do you wanna write? Do you like to see it? Do you like to put your hands on it? Do you wanna write the two plus two equals four? As opposed to me telling you and just believing what I say? So we have to identify learning styles, interest, tools. There's a lot to do, right? But we have to get in there and get our hands dirty to find that out.
Uh, uh, what? What level of engagement do you see parents involved in their their students' education? Like, is it, do you see a lot of parents involved or do you see the opposite? Do you see not enough parents involved?
Well, I can guess, you know, ba- based on our our performances, it would it would be me to say that there might be, that might be uh area of concern. And, you know, I'm a single parent of two girls and I'm involved. But unfortunately, you know, I'm not, I'm not around a lot of families to know that. Cause what I am seeing that seems to be a common thread. When I ask about um other fam, you know, I'll say, hey, how how's your how's your daughter doing in school? Oh, they're always in the room on their phone, right? I so and I can get it. So these kids are always learning. They stay in the rooms twenty plus hours a day on these cell phones and stuff. So there's no interaction. I don't really think that um, you know, that being measured like it should. Don't really know how they're engaged in school, how the parents plays a role and how the kids learn. I I wouldn't really know the answer to that. You know, because it's it's not really policed that way like it used to be.
Yeah, I think that would be interesting to know, uh, because as a parent, I am I'm involved in my son's. Sometimes I feel like I'm not involved enough. Um, but my son has, you know, straight A's. And I think my wife and I kinda do a good job of tag team in the situation where, you know, she's she's up to date on all the grades and um and she's up to date on, you know, whether his assignments got turned in or, you know, if he failed at an assignment. And then I'm kinda like the reinforcement when there's something not turned in. I I make sure, you know, I'm I come in as kind of the authoritative figure and say, hey, you have until this time to get this done. Um, or I'm gonna contact your teacher or whatever the co- the case is. So I I think that has a big part, that plays a big part of my son's success in his grades. But how do we get other parents to do the same thing?
Yeah, so I would say like what comes to mind, right? Just a suggestion, right? I believe in group thinking. I'll just throw it out there. So I would say like peer tutoring, right? Say it's your son, maybe um, you know, we can make an incident. Maybe we see your son playing with 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 a kid every recess and we see he has a bomb with with a kid that's not doing too well. We might say to your son, hey, um, you think you work with him a little bit on his reading and stuff? And um, you guys do that, you know, and and we'll give you an extra fifteen minutes of recess. He might tell his buddy, hey, uh, the teacher said, man, you sit down and do your reading sheet. I'll help you if you need me. And we do that, man, and then we can go outside and throw the football some more, right? You find a way to maybe do something like that, right? When you have a kid that that's doing, maybe you can get that to be contagious. Does that make sense?
It does. Yep. But how do we get the parents to buy into that? Or, you know, how do we get the parents to be more involved, I guess?
Well, here's the thing. So it works in another way too. So let's say the example I gave you. Your son has a buddy, right, from the neighborhood. They go to school together. And then your son starts to influence the academic aspect of this child. Well, guess what? When a when a then when the kid goes home and he sees the improvement in the grade, the mom starts to feel like she's a part of it. My son is doing good. He gets straight A's, but they don't know that he, right? And so then when he starts to get invited to the academic banquets, right, they start to feel like the other parents that are succeeding, right? They say, well, I got the invitation too. I'm going to my son's uh uh academic banquet. So you can get a parent involved that way too, right? Either way. So when, you know, like even with an athlete, right? You got a son that's scoring twenty-five points a night, but that parent's gonna come, right? Cause they're they're performing. So I think if we can change the performance of the student in the school, it may bring that parent to get involved, right? Cause they'll be like, well, you know, I maybe I need to start going to the PTA meetings. I see my son is getting good grades. And then that teacher will say, yeah, your your son's really improving. And then she might start to be like you in your role. Your work done? You better make sure, you know, she starts to reinforce. Cause now she sees that she can have a, he or she can have a part in that. So you see how that can work either way?
Yeah, I agree. Uh, so the PTA, are there are there are there a parent like support group, like network? Um, is there anything for parents where they can go talk to other parents? Hey, like my kid's struggling. Um, you know, I've tried all these things. I can't exactly figure out, you know, why he just can't get on track, you know, or uh, is there anything like that?
Well.
And I know this isn't over, this isn't a role for the board.
Yeah, yeah, but I get it. But I I hear things too. So I think there was a time Dr. Perkins, when he was when he was here with the district. He tried to have that involvement. And so maybe five people come, then thirteen people, and then it it dissipates, right? It doesn't continue, right? And so we have to look into that. So that's that those are, that's great, what you're saying, right? And that's what we want, we wanna do. You know, however you do that, I mean, it might be more more than one way to do that, but I know we have made attempts, right? It sounds like through Dr. Perkins. Yeah, you said I am a board member, but with that, I'm sure there's something in place. But like you said, you can, you can have it, but what good is it if no one comes, right?
Right.
So that's the other thing that, like you said, the buy-in. You know, what is gonna buy in this community? You know, we haven't had an answer in twenty plus years. Right? Cause if we had a buy-in, we wouldn't be failing for the for as long, consecutively as long as we have. So, yeah, so and with that and with that, um, with that, you know, I have to take accountability too. Like you said, I'm part of that, right? And I don't wanna be.
Right. So it it really comes down to the administration in implementing implementing a lot of these things. And providing the the teachers, the parents and the students with the correct, with the right resources. So everybody's on the same page. Everybody's working towards the same goal. Um, and it's a board's job to basically delegate the appointment of a lot of these positions.
Oh, absolutely.
Right? So how do you find the right people for the
Yeah, so.
For these spots?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, cause something comes to mind. So I thought about shadowing other districts, right, that are performing. I don't promise. So maybe uh as a two board members, as a board, we go on our own time and we go to a school that's performing. You know, Jefferson got a four point five out of five. Let's hang out there for a week, right? Let's go there for a couple of hours on a Saturday, Sunday, a Zoom call. Hey, can you share a little bit? Let's start asking. We can't have pride, you know, and say, well, you know, we'll do it ourselves. Let's go, let's go and see what's out there.
You know, I think uh I think one person who's currently on the board who has probably no better better, no better perspective would be Mr. Rapuse. I mean, he's worked for Jefferson, who's a four point five. He actually uh is taking on the role of his as a principal.
Interim, yeah.
Uh, for the for the district. So, I mean, and he's on the board. So are there things that he's recommended or um maybe passed down to somebody else who could, you know, maybe try to incorporate some of these things that Jefferson is doing?
So I would say that if he has, I haven't heard them. So and 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 that that raises a um um a response. So since I've been on the board, uh, I gotta tell you, we don't have meetings about the kids. We don't do that. We don't talk about I E Ps. We don't talk about how we're going to um change things. Cause we have this mindset. We're gonna leave it to our superintendent. We don't have that accountability right there. Well, we we trust the superintendent to do it and we're not going to get involved. We we don't address those issues. Here's what we do address. It's just like, I I feel like I'm a bank teller. It's just about who's getting the money, who isn't?
Let me ask, how often is a superintendent evaluated?
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
Sometimes that's based on their contract. Like some, like um some some, let's say, like Le Rubicic, right? Wasn't interviewed. He was interim and in his contract, no evaluation. That was sad.
And when the evaluation comes up, I would I would presume it would be almost an evaluation of the district. And how and like the progress is being made.
Right. Correct? So, yeah, so let me tell you how the process is very, it's lame. It's standard questions. We rate them one through five anonymously. And it might be their personal goals. So they'll write goals that they say they're going to achieve. They'll say, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do this, do these things. And then when we get our evaluation, I have no information that they achieved them. But what I see the board do uh, standard above. I'm like, based on what? Nothing. It's sad.
So there's like no information, no statistics.
No, no. They they don't say, hey.
Based on perception then or?
Perception. It doesn't say that superintendent doesn't say this. My goal is to make sure reading levels are up by point five percent by. And then I look, so when you didn't get, you got a point two, set up a point five. I don't get that information. They want me just to be filling out an evaluation, just to be filling it out. And it's sad. Nothing to look at. It's, I'm telling you, so.
Just going through the motions.
Going through the motions. Like when you look in our article or or Bennett's, you'll see uh Mr. Nimi says we we evaluated ninety percent, ninety-six percent of our employees this year. When I got on the board, they weren't doing it at all. Like, when you talk about that interviewing process, right? Um, I would say, um, they'll say, well, this this kid has been in the district for two years. And she's this or he's that. And then I would say, well, where's their evaluation? Well, they haven't been evaluated since they've been in the district for two, three years. And then I would say to the superintendent, well, how do you know? He said, well, I go around and I talk to them. Nah, that don't work for me. So you said it. You said it. I can't say it no better than you said it. It's just perception. Man, there's no accountability. That's that's one of the components of why we're not where we need to be academically. It's 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 lame.
Yeah, I mean, that would only make sense if you have somebody who's in, you know, because it's been mentioned that the the board is not responsible for the day-to-day activities. Your job is to delegate somebody to to take care of those.
Right.
Um, but they should have goals in mind. They should have written down goals, uh, short term, long term. And then an evaluation on where those, where they're at on those goals um periodically. And I think it would be, I I will, I guess, let me ask you if if well, I mean, if you're not getting the information, how can you hold them accountable to their goals?
You're saying it. So here's the thing. They can write all the goals they want. But when I ask, well, you know, well, did you, I I don't have concrete information. So how sometimes like, you know, I think their evaluation is a public record. You know, I'm taking my word for it. But I can tell you, when I look at it, there's been times I haven't participated, right? Because I'm like, nah, I'm not filling this out just because you want me to. Cause you'll say my goal, they'll have these goals, but I don't know how they're being met or how they're being measured. And then I'll sit there and look at these other, you know, they're anonymous, but I'll look at the other. And I'll say, wow, why did this person get excuse me, this this rating with with nothing, no evidence? There's no way, I I haven't had now, I haven't had that, I haven't been afforded that opportunity to see any benchmarks being met. It just sounds fluffy. Does that make sense? It just, it sounds good. But what's the end result? We're not where we need to be.
Yeah, and I guess, uh, you know, so some of the goals they would try to meet would be like the chronic absenteeism from forty-nine percent down to forty percent. Or something along those lines, correct?
Right. But even if you have a goal, tell me, right? Yeah, this is my goal, but I didn't meet them. And this is, this is what I'm finding out. And it's okay, right? You know, just, I wanna know. Well, you didn't meet it. What'd you find out? Well, we we don't have enough of this or that. Right? I I can't even make an informed decision. Because I don't, I think, I don't know if it's pride, but a superintendent may not, may not have that comfortability to say, hey, I didn't achieve. Who wants to say that to a board, right?
Right.
That has the ability to, like I do, make a motion to terminate you.
Right, but that's where the board would come in and say, um, basically to hold them accountable, say, hey, where's this information? You set this goal. Let me see your progress.
Yeah, so.
Kinda like a parent does.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly. I think that we should practice that way. I agree with you one hundred percent.
So, um, would it, it it's obviously the board's responsibility to make sure these goals are met. How how does that change? How do you how do you make sure these goals are met? And what are the repercussions or the consequences if they're not met?
Right. So so I would say to that, so when I talked about initially when you hire them, right? What is the vision of the board? What is your vision and how they coincide? And then at that point, like you, like you said, every ninety days, we wanna see you. Maybe because you're new that first year, you know, we can customize these contracts. Or we wanna meet with you every thirty days to see, so we can help you. If you see you're trying to achieve this objective, but you're finding out you need this or minus that, we can adjust as we go. So I would just really have more uh meetings with the superintendent initially. And then when they can take the reign, right? You know, you you know, um, throughout the process, then you you can extend that that contract accordingly by progress and let them continue in the district. Not just do a standard, hey, here's three years, you be our superintendent with no accountability. So that's this kinda superintendent, I I would, I would, um, I I would like to oversee. Like, just just tell me more often, so we can think more. So we can talk to the, you know, they talk to the treasurer too. Can we move the money this way? Can we apply for a grant? What do you need? Do you need extra? So I want more communication with with the superintendent in that way. And it has to be day-to-day, but just tell me. You know, attendance still still isn't moving. Okay. You got anything? You talked to the truant officer? Yeah. Well, is there any training out there? Well, there's a school out there that has good attendance. Well, let's let's have you go do a workshop out there. Go see if you can make a call to that board or to that superintendent and say, hey, what what do you do to get your to get your kids to be more involved? Or what are what are the ingredients that allows that to happen? So it's just, just kinda thinking outside the box, right, man? Just
Right.
Be be able to do that.
So what are the uh, what would be the potential consequences of uh consistently not meeting their goals?
Yeah, so, you know, I would start out with, um, you know, say, you know, every every thirty days, right? Uh, you know, talking to them, you know, and this is a, you know, a fresh start, right? And I would, I I would kinda like see, make sure I'm giving everything that they need. Then I would say, okay, we're gonna put you on an improvement plan, right? A personal improvement plan to to make sure we want these things. Cause tho- those things hold you accountable. Cause if you don't meet those things, then 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 we're going to not continue to have you as a superintendent. So we just apply the right, the right pressure. But I think when you do that every thirty days or every two weeks, whatever it takes, I think that you're able to head off those consequences, right? Cause that's what you don't want.
Right.
So if they don't, it, cause then they're able to see they're not meeting them, right? There's no hard fun. Say, yeah, well, they they tried. They gave me this, they gave me that. And I understand why they're going in the direction that they're going in. And we'll be firm about that, you know? By this, by this, um, by this time, we would like to see if you're here. If you're close or not close, what's going on? So say out of that three-year contract, a year and a half, you're not where you need to be, we're gonna, we gotta, we gotta stop the bleeding. We can't be afraid to change quickly. We have to because of the situation that we're in.
But you don't wanna change too fast because you wanna keep consistency.
Well, well, here's the thing. The life that we live in, it moves fast now, right?
It does. It does. But you don't wanna change too fast where the, maybe the the plan hasn't unraveled fully.
Yeah, but in 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 in, you know, and those measures would have to be, you know, I, it wouldn't be a quick decision, not at all.
Right.
Because here's the thing, uh, just from my perspective, when I wanna help somebody, man, I just do. Right? I don't, I don't get in somebody's life and not help them. Cause I will help them too. So if you're, if you're under my tutelage, you're gonna do well. Cause I'm innovative. I'm a thing outside the box. And I wanna help you so bad. That's why I've been doing it for twenty years. I'm still that same person as a school board member. As a father, as a president, as a community member, you know? So once you get uh in my environment, I only know how to be a champion. I reference how I was raised. That's all I know. I don't know failure. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I just don't know anything about it. I don't have experience in it, right? So if someone experiences something different from me, th- then that's their experience. It just isn't mine. I don't even think about that.
Right.
All I know is I can do it, you know, and that's part of believing, right? I'm a believer. All I can tell you is you tell me you wanna be something, I'm gonna do all I can to help you be where you wanna be. So that superintendent, they're gonna succeed. Guarantee it. I'm gonna make sure of it.
Well, Tim, we're about two hours and ten minutes in. Is there anything you'd like to say before we wrap everything up?
I'd like to say thank you. I like your setup.
Thank you.
If you need a new co-host, you know, put me down as a substitute.
All right.
I just wanna say that, um, come Tuesday, this is really the biggest moment of our lives. We've been running um this district the same way, the same, the same um outcomes for a very, very long time. And we have young men in our community that wanna be on our school board. I don't know where I was at thirty, but I wasn't thinking about no school board. At thirty-seven, I wasn't thinking about At thirty seven, I wasn't thinking about the school board. So to have these two candidates also along with me running for school board. It's important. Because. This may encourage other people in their forties, younger, that can bring a different perspective, even younger than them, they could run for board. And we cannot. We cannot afford to miss this opportunity. I'm on the board of mistrust. Uh, not not honest, deceitful, and those are very honest adjectives. It's true. These are my experiences with this board. My experience with this board is not good. And we don't need the board that we have. Now, I gotta start somewhere, right? And I'm gonna start with Darius Williams and Sammy Torres. And I believe those two can take this over for a very long time. And that's, I want this system to get farmed, like you said, no quick changes. Make progress stop. Let's get the mindsets in there that can change our community. It's the time has come.
Awesome.
November seventh, Sammy Torres, Darius Williams, Tim Fleming.
Yes, make sure you get out there and vote, Tim. Uh, actually, hold on, before I, there was, I did have a question for you from Tom. Let me see if. I think you've kind of answered this, but I'm gonna ask you, uh, if elected, do you intend to consult with the people you ran with and endorse? And endorsed, uh. Let me read this as he wrote it. If elected, does he intend to consult with just the people he ran with and endorsed? Endorsed it, does he see a scenario in which he can work with others?
Yeah, so, um, you know, I've been, I've been talking to Darius Williams and Sammy Torres for probably the last two years or so. So when I think about, you know, Dr. Berryman and Mr. Nimi is gonna be there. Well, you know what? They don't have, you know, like I said, it's not about um um that I can't work with all the board, cause we are a board. It just brings us perspective, right? It's not a power grid. It's saying, hey. We have to start to be innovative, put our differences aside. And and allow um opportunity for others. So for example, with that, like I was a board, I'm I'm a board member. And I was told by Mr. Nimi, my second year, I had to be president or VP. Well, as soon as I spoke out against Ms. Seaford, I never became either one of those. Right? So it showed me they didn't have the ability at that time to farm. The board, cause what happens if you made me board president? Right? I would have learned something. VP. And they 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 did not permit me to do that. And so I want them to at least learn that. Like, when I get on the board, I don't expect to just stay the board president the whole time, right? Let this Sammy get a s- a try at it. Let's Darius get a try at it. Mr. Nimi's been board president about three, four times. Uh, Dr. Barry, maybe the same, president, VP, they just rotate between each other. So that's that's something I hope that they can get a perspective on. For you to grow a community, you have to allow other people to have opportunities and not keep them to yourself. So I I wouldn't isolate anybody, cause they have something they can add. Right? But the way they currently are functioning. And isolating and not allowing me to be my best, that's that's not beneficial to anybody in our community, not to them or me. So I would say that.
There you have it. All right. Thank you again, Tim. Uh, best of luck on the election on Tuesday. Uh, appreciate you coming on on behalf of myself and my absent co-host today, Tom Ross. Thank you for watching. If you made it this far, make sure you get out there and vote. We'll see you on the next one.
Thanks for having me.